And call this meeting to order. This is a work session. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanna take a minute to remind everybody that while this is an official board meeting, it is a work session. No official business will be conducted. This is just a time for discussion. Do I need to approve the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, I moved to approve the agenda.
Support. Are there any questions or discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to comments from the audience. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Man, you guys know my name by now.
My name is Lynn Shance. You have my address on file. And thank you so much Cheryl for letting me know that the date I gave you was wrong. So I did, I did find the video. It was from February 27th and it was the work session. The timestamp at 55 minutes was where Carrie was speaking. The timestamp at an hour and six minutes was, I do not believe who the other lady was speaking. Because Jim mentioned a couple different names and he said something about Debbie, but I thought he said something about Beth. But anyway, you can look up the timestamps. Also, when I was watching that, it said also at this time, it was said a posting for additional student support was for the district. So my question is, has more mental health staff been hired? If so, the same questions apply to them from my letter dated September 25th, 2023. And the same questions also apply to Nurse Michaela, who is in our in, and I don't believe Jim did give her last name. So this is follow-up from two weeks ago.
I will.
Are there any other comments from the audience? Hearing none, we will move on to our items of business. We'll start with our district facility needs and our next steps.
So really, this was just because we ran out of time when we had the presentation and discussion from our last work session on what direction we wanna head in terms of putting a bond issue on a ballot, when that would happen, with operational millage, keeping that the same, moving that. And then what would be the focus kind of of the bond? So that's, I know you guys just didn't have time to discuss before we had to move into the actual board meeting last time. So this was a time to kinda discuss and see what everyone's thoughts were.
I think we're all in agreement that we need to go for a bond.
Yes.
The decision now is when we put it on the ballot. And if we play it safe and go for a zero mil increase, or if we try for an increase now, if we go for a zero mil increase now, there's nothing saying that in two years, we couldn't try for an increase. But there were comments about when we wanted to put it on the ballot.
And for a zero mil, it would just have to, for it to be able to use that ballot language, it would either have to be February, May, or August. After that, then it would be just a, we'd be going for an increase and not able to use the zero mil terminology.
Well, I firmly believe that we should go for more than a zero mil. Cause I think our facilities need it in a big way. I know before we went for a $60 million bond, I think if, you know, we were able to get that down to about 30, 35, I think, with, with it being one additional mil, I think is a reasonable ask and I believe would have a wonderful chance of passing.
Just so, I'm starting to understand where everyone's coming from. What, what parts of the facilities are you thinking are kind of the biggest need to focus on?
Yeah, I think number one for me, from, from when we did the survey, the number one thing that came through with that was getting to one campus. And I'm a very, very big believer that that is extremely important in what we do. And that, you know, we could either build on to, to the intermediate or if we had to look at a new building, you know, I'm not sure, you know, what all we can afford or what we can do, but somehow we need to get down to one building or down to one campus. And I think we could do that if we added one mil.
So, we, are you saying we don't do any of the other needs then? Because we don't, one mil plus our zero increase doesn't get us to one campus and get all of those other more urgent needs.
Not all of them, but it would get a lot of them.
No, it gets us.
It gets us to one campus.
It gets us to one campus.
Then it would get a lot of, it would give us about an additional, about $10 million, I think. Correct?
I'm just looking for.
10 to 15 million dollars additional. If they're saying that it's gonna be around $20 million.
That's just for the pods, though. And like we talked.
So that was to make it two additional pods. When they did that, and I'm 100% sure, I remember Sean talking about this and laying it out, that it would be, cause why would they design two additional pods and say, this is what it's gonna cost?
Cause that's what we asked them.
And it not to house the amount of students that's needed. So.
It was just to build the two pods. That's what I asked last week when they were here.
Mike hadn't done, he was kinda going off the cuff. I don't.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure. And I guess these are things we, we could use more information on. But, and also at that time, it was only supposed to be like $14 million too, at one point.
15.2.
15 point.
Everything has dramatically increased. I mean, as we saw with even the price, price of the middle school roof, what we started was not where it actually ended up. So that's the other thing to consider. It's right now, like for example, you know, I know, I mean, this is a kind of a, it's a big kind of example, you know, for if the new high school idea came up, to go for a new high school would be about at least $110 million. So everything is just substantially more than where it was even two years ago. And I would, you know, I would love to be able to do this. I just know that, you know, with where we're at financially with looking at needing roofs, boilers, some upgraded security and safety. I also don't wanna end up in a spot where, because if we, if we didn't, weren't able to get those things, we really wouldn't have a fun balance moving forward.
I liked how Justin put it, as far as we could go back in August and say zero mil, if it didn't pass. For some reason, people said, I'm not willing to do an extra mil. We can always come back in August and say, okay, we hear you. We'll do a zero mil.
So are you talking about putting it on the February ballot? Because I thought that.
It depends on how we do the 18 mil, the operational mil. I think I wouldn't put them on the same.
No.
You know, I would move the operational part of February and, and do the bond in May.
I believe we also have the option of basically two different votes. So on the same ballot, we can do a no mil and then we can do a plus. And you have to spell out what, what you're going to do with each of those. And I guess in theory, you could lose the no mil and get the plus, but I don't know that that happens. But you do have the option of giving people the option to say, yes, 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 no, oh, yes, no, no. Without, so then I, I think you still maintain hopefully a higher chance of getting that no mil, but also may the community supports the plus one, but not having to come back again in August if it doesn't pass. Just throwing that out there.
That was something that, if I remember, they're like, that's a really bad idea from, from what the construction guy said, because they said that. Cause I had asked, I, I had asked that on the last time of trying not to do the full, in fact, and try to do a zero mil and then do an additional one. And they said that's a, that if you split it, it's a no-no.
That's interesting, cause my mother-in-law has done boards and administration and she said that she has seen success with that. That.
It kinda gives them the, their voting power.
Correct. And that it, she felt like it.
But you can vote both, right?
You can vote yes, no, no, yes, no, no, yes, yes. So you choose on each individual one. Do I support a no mil increase? Yes or no? This is what it would be used for. And then do I support a plus one? And if you do, this is what that would be used for. Now, I think that gets complicated if our goal is to take the vast majority of that and, and build pods, because not how you word it, so it'd be like a half of a pod and the rest of the pods, you know what I mean? So.
Well, you don't have to necessarily get that specific. You can write it as being, building new, new facilities and things like that. So you don't have to say, I'm gonna build something intermediate and put two pods. You don't have to put that verbiage necessarily, so.
Obviously our marketing, we need to speak to that, but yeah, the actual, yeah.
Also wanna be transparent, so people know what they're, because I did hear that, that people wanted to make sure that we weren't being so broad to then say, yes, you know, to market it as we're building a new facility and then have that new facility be a field house and not a school. So there were, there was some concern already that we weren't being transparent enough on what the bonds were going to entail. So I do know that that's a concern I heard. I think the other thing we also need to be mindful of is, I know you've mentioned several times, having that, that bigger vision, right? Like what is the five-year plan and the 10-year plan? And I think we need to be aware then that this puts us back at 2.6 or 2.85, something like that total, if we did the one mil plus. And that that's gonna then be on for 20 years. So if we do. I think that was 25. Okay, 25, 25 years. So then if we did wanna look at a larger project, five years down the road, we're now starting at a 2.8 instead of a little bit more lesser number. I'm not saying yes or no. I just think it's something we need to be aware of.
A big concern too of, if, if you don't get through in February, you're gonna run something again in August. Yeah. I mean, the fever pitch of a presidential year, three months before the general.
I just think we barely missed it with 60 million. Barely. And it was a rough time at that point for us. I mean, we had 100 million reasons why it didn't go through and very few why people felt good about what was going on between a lot of things going on in, in politics and then some things that were going on around here. You know, we didn't have a contract for the teachers and. And so, you know, I think that there's a lot more positive momentum right now going. And I think that I've already seen so many people make the comment of, we just need to, you know, pass a bond, pass a bond. I've seen a ton of people say this. And I'm really nervous if we pass a bond and they look around and they say, well, what'd you guys build with it? I'm like, well, we fixed stuff. And they're gonna be like, wait, that's not what I voted for. I voted for you guys to build some stuff. I wanna see it, you know?
And dilapidated buildings, I mean, buildings that we know that are, that the.
Well, we know, but I will say a lot of people, when they drive by them, they look at them, they go.
They think they're fine.
Things don't look bad. They look nice, you know?
It's amazing when you go in the boiler room. Sorry, Justin.
No, I was gonna say, I'd never do the primaries that bad until I walk through it. Oh my goodness. I drive by and I'm like, oh, it's bright.
Right. Cause we keep our facilities in great shape. You know, but it's one of those kinda, great, we keep them in nice shape. And then people are like, oh wow, that's a really nice building. Go inside, check out the innards of that one.
I, I think before we can decide exactly what we're gonna do, we need to really know the direction that we're going in. And I don't, honestly, I, and I like Tar-Pingster and Skilman, but I honestly don't feel like proactively, we've been given a lot of options, given the budget and what hasn't passed. And I feel like we owe it to our community to make sure that we've done our diligence. And I know that we'd have a penalty if we don't end up using them. And maybe that's the easiest path for us, but I really feel like we should look at other ideas and things like that. And where, what this 30 million, 28 million, whatever could get us and what somebody else envisions. Because we were presented with a few different options the last time. And I think if we're gonna go back out and ask for money, especially if we were to go for a one mil, I think that we need to be able to have something tangible. I mean, it took us a long, I had to physically go to FedEx and print blueprint things on poster board to, to have at township meetings because we didn't have anything. And to, to say, yeah, I'm willing to spend the money, but you can't actually physically see it. Everybody has to conceptualize what they're spending the money on. So I just, I feel like we, we need to ask a little more from the companies we're doing business with. And I think that they have to help us get over the line versus us asking and trying to pull things out of them. So I just think that we need to look at, maybe there are other ideas out there as well. And maybe they are the right partner. I'm not sure. But I just wanna make sure we've done our diligence from that perspective to make sure we have the best option.
I think if you're saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, Damian, correct me if I'm wrong. If you were wanting to look at other architectural firms or something coming in, we won't be able to go for a February.
I'm not even sure I can make it to, yeah, I think pushing it to August. I guess I, I'm, I'm a little unsure what you're looking for, so I wanna make sure I understand. I mean, I feel like every time we've said, okay, let's look at this amount of money. What can we do with it? What are our needs? What, what needs get met with this money? I feel like we've gotten very viable options from them. I mean, their job is not to envision what we want for our district. Their job is to say, okay, what do you want? And this is how much it costs to build it. And this is how much, you know, this is where your needs are. So.
When we were doing a lot of the work for the last couple of bonds, we would ask for a lot of marketing materials and they weren't here. We'd ask for them and they wouldn't come. Then we'd ask them and they weren't here. And so they did not do a good job of getting us the maps and the breakdowns. And a lot of people were asking for that stuff and we didn't have them. We were asking for them and they were like, we'll get them to you, we'll get them to you. And it did take them a long time on some of them it took. And then when we get them sometimes, it was kinda like, it wasn't a whole lot. And so there were a couple pieces they did a great job on, but they were pretty slow with responding to a lot of things is what you're talking.
Even giving us updated costs for, for the two, two extra pods or whatever. Whenever we've asked that, we had old numbers. We've had to ask for that. So I just wanna make sure we're tightened up on the budget that we're really looking for. And then we know really, whether it's zero mills and it will get the job done or one mil, and maybe we just need to demand more of them. I don't, I don't know.
I think if we have a direction, I'm happy to go back to them to say, you know, if we have, here's our plan A, here's our plan B. We wanna see what's feasible. But I think, I think what they're looking for is also some direction from us. Like what, what is it are we looking for? Because fixing the buildings we currently have and making them, you know, as good as they can be for students and staff is very different than abandoning a building and building a whole new one. So I think they're just looking for, what is our focus? What are we? You know, in their defense too, I don't think they wanna keep spewing numbers and then have us be like, oh, well, you know, let's go look at this. Let's go look at that. I think they're also looking for a direction from us. And then I'm happy to be the one to stay on them and work with them to follow up and get whatever it is we're looking for and need. I think they're, they're definitely willing to work with us. And when we've had the ideas and brought it to them, you know, they do come up with, with, and they do have, right now, they have that knowledge of our buildings where someone new coming in could, could be very, you know, I've worked with other architectural firms and, and marketing, but it takes time to get to know a district and what, you know, what the vision is and where we're wanting to go. And so that would be time. They're not gonna, a different firm wouldn't wanna come in and just kinda take a guess. They would need to go through the facilities, study themselves, gather all the input, have all that stuff that was done before. So I mean, it's.
I, I like Natalie's idea from the standpoint that I think it gives the voters a choice. I think it doesn't put us at risk for not getting anything, but it also gives us the opportunity to maybe get more.
Well, it does, because they could vote no, no.
They could, but they can vote no.
Yeah, anyway.
Even if there's, if it's the no, the, the no mil increase is by itself, they can still vote no. I think by splitting them up, I feel like we don't jeopardize the zero mil.
I'm not sure if we'd be able to do the no mil. Because we wouldn't be asking for no mil.
I think there are two separate ones. You can do a no mil and then you.
You're talking about verbiage though, right?
Totally separate vote as a.
Then it would be an either or vote. It wouldn't be a, yes, if you're doing a no mil or if you're doing a plus one mil with the, you know, the no mil added on.
Because technically the one mil is less than the other one. So that's also a no mil, if the other one doesn't pass.
I see what you're saying. I think that there is.
So I think from a legal piece, I'm not sure if they can do that.
I think it can.
I don't know. I'm, I've never written a ballot.
And I've never, I haven't been in a district that's gone for that before, so.
So I'm just not sure if they can put the, that language on their no mil, if you have a second one. I would think they can't.
I, I think that's the whole point of having the two is that you can opt to have the no mil, not the plus. It might be that you have to.
But see, it's not a plus because it's not, if this passes, then this passes. It's, do you want either or both or neither? And so if, it could be that the one passes and the other one doesn't, then you still have a no mil. So they, people could say, you know what, I want just the pods put on, but I don't wanna fix up the other buildings. And then it's still a no mil increase. But you, I don't think that you can put that verbiage on there because you're asking for two different things.
We talked about, we talked about this the very first go-round and I, it seems like we had talked about the possibility of doing two separate.
Well, I mean, that's something we'd have to ask.
I can find out. Yeah. Mark, I just, I don't know since I wasn't here. And I also don't know, cause I haven't had any experience with a bond that has that option.
I, I'm just gonna kinda say that I am very uncomfortable with the idea of, of a additional, if they can't be separated out. I feel like our needs are so great that if we lose another bond, our district is going to be in dire position.
And I agree that I think we're in dire position if we don't. Because I feel as though we have too many needs not to ask that of the community, because I think the community wants to, but I really do. I think that they want to. I think last time the commu, the communication wasn't strong enough and wasn't effective enough about how that mil was laid out and why it said there was more. So, I mean, I'm, I'm a firm believer this community wants to improve these schools and we'll stand behind it. I mean, I really do. And I think if we go for anything less, I think that we're doing an injustice to our school and our community.
If you remember when Jim passed out the comments that were made on Edwardsburg, Ben and now on some of the other Facebook pages, they specifically called out certain things and you heard reoccurring themes on things like the tennis courts. People were dead set on, we were just fixing tennis courts and things like that. So I agree with you, Tony, to the point that the messaging really has to be clear. Whatever we go for, it really has to be clear. And I think it was, and also we have to be ultra-clear on the actual cost to the average homeowner in the township, because it just wasn't clear that, I think even your dad even had said, you know, sick, I, you know, $675, I, I can't pay that, you know? My mom said it to me, right? So we had people that didn't fully understand. So the messaging is super key. The marketing is super key on this one.
I think we're all in agreement that we need a bond and none of us are happy with the amount. I think that.
That's exactly it.
That's it. I think we might be smarter to go for the zero mil increase now with a plan of in two years going for two mills. Or, you know, build some confidence with our voters that we've made these improvements. We've done the security upgrades. We've done this with a plan for the future.
I mean, I've said my piece and I, you guys know where I stand. I just don't think that people are gonna see it. That's gonna be where you're gonna go back out and say, you know what, in two years, you're gonna have to go out and ask for two mills or three mills or whatever it is. You know, what would I get for the last time? And that's my big fear.
Boilers and security for, rubs and boilers and security for our kids.
People don't see that.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Yeah, I think the only thing they'll see is the front of the security thing. So those are pretty much the only things that they'll really see.
Yeah. Make sure we have.
That's, that's a great point.
And then make sure we have walking out, new boiler.
But still, it's so funny how people just don't.
You're not wrong.
They don't have the.
We can do the best we can to provide proof.
Right.
Yeah. And it's tough, Tony, because I, I wholeheartedly agree. I think that there are some very vocal chunk of our community that definitely supports us. I think that there is a chunk of no voters that are gonna stay no's. And I'm just not sure that, that we have enough to outweigh that. I mean, twice. that we have enough to outweigh that. I mean, twice we have not. And so my my worry is just.
Well, I would discount the November vote for one thing because there wasn't a lot of work done on that. We had a handful of people who put in hours for it, but we, the school didn't put a lot of, I mean, we just did not put a huge effort forward to win that vote. I mean, that was a lot of scrambling. And then if you remember what happened days before that one. So I would toss that out as November was a bad idea and we should not have done. But the August vote, number one, was during the fair. And I can't tell you how many people said, well, shoot, if I know it was gonna be close, I'd have went and voted. I mean, those people alone may have won it for us. I mean, because we didn't lose by that many. And then the other thing was how many people said, well, shoot, I didn't understand. I, you guys said it was gonna be this. And I went in and it, the ballot said that. And that was the other thing that I heard so many people say. And I think that, you know, what we're asking for is is a very manageable number, only saying one additional mill. And it would get us a lot.
Do you feel like you have specific people that you know are willing to head up a very time consuming gas committee? Is that, I mean, my real concern is that I don't know that we have those people.
Yeah, we've, we've put some names forward and people come to Cheryl and and offer to do that. Yeah.
Let's put it this way, if we can't get that, we're not winning any, any vote. You know, if you don't have any, if people aren't willing to step forward and and have some excitement for this, I don't care if it's a zero mill or one mill, we're not gonna win.
I I ask that because, you know, you said that you didn't feel like there was a lot done for the November.
Right.
Now we're going back a third time and a lot of it's the same people that get involved with things. If we're talking about an increase, I, it's gotta be above and beyond anything that happened either of the two easiest times and.
And just playing devil's advocate, there, I mean, historically, zero mill increases pass at a substantially higher rate than an increase. And I think that's really what RJ was presenting was that it's substantial. And so, yes, we're only asking a little bit more if we go for one mill, but we're asking for more.
I would just hope that our community would stand behind us a little bit better than that and we would go a little stronger considering that the communities around us have done that. And.
I would love that. Again, I worry because we've lost the two previous. And basically this comes out to the two point eight then. And so that's more than fail that. The no mill plus one essentially puts our millage then at two point, two point eight, right?
That's where.
I'm sorry, three point eight. So our no mill averages out to two point eight. We add one, that's three point eight.
Right.
Which is more than.
By no means does this mean that I don't think we need all the money. Um, I would love to see that. I'm, what I'm struggling with is, is the best decision to take what has a higher likelihood of passing and meet some of really real needs or gamble on something that's less likely. Statistically speaking alone.
And if we got the additional, what would we, what would we put it towards?
Like I said, I believe that we need to get to one campus. I mean, that's what I believe. And that's what the community said.
I wholeheartedly believe that. I don't believe we get there and get our essential needs met with a one mill. No plus one, I'm sorry.
I think we put less into the high school and we built that.
We build the pods?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do think we need to make sure, in all fairness to the voters that would be coming out and to just our students and staff, that we do look at. I mean, there's things that need to be done at all levels. And I think we do need to make sure that all levels are touched. Um, because that is one thing I also was hearing from voters of like, it needs to be that everybody is benefiting from this, that it's not just elementary students. It's everybody who would be, all students benefiting from a bond.
Right, I agree with that.
I just think the elementary level is what's, has the worst facilities right now, the biggest need. And, you know, unfortunately, but both of those buildings are about equal. Um, there's a little bit of variance in what the numbers that were presented the last meeting. But certainly, I mean, that, the number there versus middle school and high school is significantly different. Um, and I think if you go in there, I mean, you know, and we had illustrations on Facebook of, you know, baking sheets keeping the the roofs from leaking. So I mean, there's, there's clearly a, you know, a case to be made there. But um, but I agree with you, Courtney, I think that people see, they feel the pain of what affects them daily, right? Like, I don't necessarily see the pain points in the high school because my son is much younger than that. So touching all the voters on on hot buttons is super.
And remember, we can always go back in August for a zero mill. If it's that high of a percentage and it's that, like a much of a.
Doing this in February?
May.
I think it'd be May.
So we're also going to have to market the change there because we also don't want voters getting.
Yeah.
Compute, because that's, that's beyond important.
Right.
I liked Kevin's idea though about that, the operating millage that we were to go out for multiple years. So it wasn't so confusing to voters, especially if we're going to do more than one bond in the next few years. It does get confusing. I get a lot of phone calls on that.
Do, but I think we have to educate why we're doing that too. Because I also don't want a misconception that we're doing something that's, you know, you know, not completely on the up and up and why we're doing it and what other districts have for lengths of times for their operational millage. Um, and who it, you know, who really it does impact. Um, so yeah, so that's. So just if if we're making that switch, that just needs to be something that is communicated out really well on what that means.
Kevin, you're kind of the expert in the room when it comes to taxes and that sort of thing. Have you seen a lot of changes like in them, in people moving their operating millage around? I mean, is that?
The one thing that started this was uh, Mason Township where I work, their clerk was like, why do they run the operating every year? Why don't they run it for multiple years? And then I was looking on day and if you pass eighteen and that's it, it will be subject to rollbacks. So you're still, your operating millage will shrink. But I've got a couple of examples here of townships or school districts that have passed more than eighteen. You can only levy eighteen. But so like this school district passed eighteen point four. That's a number that gets rolled back. So that number stays above eighteen for some time. So you don't have to renew it every year and you don't get rolled back applied to your operating village. And that keeps them flush. I mean, that keeps them whole. And I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna say that it's on the up and up because the, these are the actual documents that they used to levy the taxes on the winter bills. So then they've got a couple others here where they've got additional, like the eighteen point four um, was rolled back to seventeen point six. And then in May of twenty-two, they passed another one point nine. Just additional operating. But again, it's maxed out at eighteen mills. So no matter what, no matter how much we pass, most we can put on the tax bills, eighteen mills. And it doesn't impact obviously principal residents. It only impacts second homes, businesses, so.
I like that idea.
Me too.
I think you can go up to five years. I could be wrong.
Yeah, I think you can actually go above that.
Oh, you can, okay. I don't, I wasn't.
But you do, when you get the rollback, then you're ending up going back anyway out because you need to then make up that difference. So it's.
Are we leaning towards then moving the operating millage to the February ballot?
I think May is the most likely spot for, if we're gonna go for an increase.
For the bond.
Yeah. I think that's still successful. I think August people are on winding down their summer out of town. May, everybody's still in school. Stakeholders, if you will, are in town. It's away from a midterm or a presidential election, so you don't get angry folks. That's my opinion.
So my thoughts now, I keep bouncing. I've been, my brain's been everywhere. Because it's like, I, I think it stinks. We all know that. We all think that a zero stinks. Um, doing a one, I don't know if we can get to one campus without being too thin on other things. So then that makes me nervous. So then it's like, but then it's sunk cost in Eagle Lake. So then it means extending Eagle Lake longer and that sucks, you know? But then it's like, but then it is what it is. We, we, we also need the funds. And I don't want to like wuss out and just go zero. You know, I'd love to kind of swing for the fences, but we've already been kicked in the stomach twice. So I'm just struggling because it's like, where do we go from here? You know, i- if we get the, we need the funds, we know we can fix up a bunch of stuff. And we need to win over the community somehow and then try to push. But that scares me because it's like, we'd really need to win over the community to do a two mill increase five years from now. And is that gonna get us what we need to move to one campus in the primaries falling apart? Primary makes me more nervous than Eagle Lake, so. That is my two cents. There you go.
Well, let me ask this, would it be easier to try to get one mill now and one mill in two years? Or one mill, two mills in two years from now?
A lot, a lot will depend on the economy, right?
Yeah.
Well, and I think what you're using it for, because if you're looking to get onto one campus, whether it's adding pods, building a new building, you need all that money together. You can't build a part of a building or building one pod isn't going to do anything for us really. Um, so I think splitting.
A whole project, gotcha.
If you're looking, if you're looking at that scope of projects, splitting it up over that many multiple years is going to be hard. And our roofs and boilers are not probably going to make it long term to do that.
Well, our roof should, right? We've just.
We're not done with our roofs. We still have a ways to go.
How much more do you think we have in roofs?
We, I, multiple millions of dollars.
They, we had projected a million dollars a year for the next three years, a million dollars.
Right, that's what we have passed.
That's not what's in the budget right now.
That's what we need.
That's what we need.
So if we needed that right now, that would be coming out of our fund balance.
My concern also, and again, I want to be to one campus. I wholeheartedly support that. By adding pods, we're still not addressing the worst district in our, or the worst school in our whole district. I mean, primary is the one with the greatest needs. And while that does consolidate us down to one, now we're left with building a new K one here. Um, it just, and that's, you know, again, coming back down the road.
I feel like in the last round, that at one point Eagle Lake was assessed worse than the primary. I I feel like that. Maybe I'm, I need to look at the numbers again, but there was something about.
And we did do, just do some upgrades to the rubs. So that came off of what was needed.
Eagle Lakes wasn't great, but it it wasn't at that like, I think they said sixty, sixty-six percent.
I, I guess I look at the, the opportunity for taking Eagle Lake and selling it, okay? And, and doing, and making something on it versus the primary. If we take the primary down, there's nothing we can do with the building. Like, it's, it's money lost a hundred percent. So at least Eagle Lake can be somewhat salvageable. I mean, we've had interests from a nursing home perspective, some other perspectives, plus all that building that's going on out there. Somebody's going to want that property. So I just look at it from that perspective, that primary, we, if if we take the primary down, we, that's money lost in that whole project versus Eagle Lake. There might be a way to salvage some of the money by, you know, selling it off and finding someone that wants to invest in it.
Probably not enough to even put a dent in the cost of what we're losing by continuing to put more money into primary. I mean, if if we're going to look at replacing a building, I would think it would be our building in the worst condition. Um, should be our first priority if that's what we're looking at.
Well, I think they're both in terrible condition, I mean, bad condition. And the thing is Eagle Lake's in a bad place. Like, if you talk to the fire marshal and all those, you know, it's also a security piece with that place. And so from, from a bigger picture, you know, granted, the facility is worse, but the situation of Eagle Lake is much worse.
What if we tried for the zero mill now and made a plan for two years to go for two mills to build our new K three?
We, it takes more than two.
That won't get you there. Two mills, you're gonna get about, by twenty-five million?
Yeah, two mills won't get it.
So, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if we're gonna have a chance to get to one campus, I believe this is our best chance in the next several years to get there. Otherwise, we're still gonna be chasing our tail for a long time.
So if we use the money to add the pods, we're going to have to do something with traffic flow, right? Because we're gonna have to figure that out. But security was also, those three things were in the top three of everyone's concerns when you talk to people in the community. So my question is, can we address if we move, whether it be primary or Eagle Lake, to a single campus? And I agree with you, Tony, this is our chance to get a single campus. Um, can we make the necessary traffic flow improvements? And um, the security vestibules and the things that we've been talking about, can we do that with, we can't do it with zero, zero mills, right?
We can't do it with plus, with plus one.
Well, I, I think it'd be great to really find out what would it take. Okay, can we actually get, because, you know, these guys were kind of talking off the cuff because we were kind of throwing them numbers and they really didn't come in prepared with the numbers for saying, hey, if we want to add one, what, what does that look like? So could we actually get something that says, hey, if you want to put two pods on, this is, and.
They bring those numbers?
They, it was um, twenty.
It was right at the zero mills is what I feel like it.
It was twenty-some million for that. Just straight off the bat for the two pods.
Right, so then what do we take off of?
I don't think he brought that with him. He kind of.
But he'd had that from before. They'd calculated it out before and sent it so that they had done. Because I'd asked for that and they'd done that. And I, I can't remember, it was twenty point something, but it was.
So twenty mil, twenty mil to do two pods.
Then what do we take off of the list that the no mill? Because I, I look at that list and I don't see anything on there that's optional.
I think we're gonna have to dip into the fund balance. I mean, I hate to say it, but I, I think that we've sat on a healthy fund balance for quite some time. And I think we're at a point of desperation. I mean, fund balance.
Yeah, well.
Stay above fifteen percent.
I was gonna say, and we have to be very careful with that. And we're also down students.
Yeah.
Um, and we're going into negotiating all contracts this year. And it's a teacher shortage.
And I think it, like, in like desperation, it could probably cover a roof, but I mean, to stay above, it's fifteen percent.
You want to stay above, because if not, you start borrowing and then that starts costing money to make payroll. Um, and then if you get low enough, you end up on the fiscally distressed list. And the state will come in and start telling you what you can and cannot do.
So if we want to truly look at this as an option, I think we have to look long and hard at that list that we had made up for what the no mill was gonna be used for, say, okay, what are we cutting off of this list?
Well, or do we look and say, what if it's one point two?
I think that.
You know, I mean, what, what we have to be able to do is go out there and say, this is what it's for. And this is the difference it's going to make. And I think if we do a good enough job with that and we get the teachers behind it and everybody else, I really believe that we have a wonderful chance to win this. Uh, I mean, the community, I think, wants to vote for it.
I feel like we've given them the opportunity twice.
We were asking for sixty million almost, right? So what if we go in a direction that?
One point eight plus one point six is what, two point eight? Two point, wait, one point.
Three point four. Did you say one point six plus one point eight?
So one, one point two, which is what you say, okay, maybe go for one point two.
I don't know.
Plus our no mill is one point six.
I was gonna say, uh, uh, the one mill put the total debt levy amount, um, basically at just under four mill total. With what we had on from before, plus then adding one.
But the previous bond we were asking, just three point something mills, right? Or two, what was it ask? I forget.
We're three, three point oh five.
And that was just on top of everything.
On top of it, yes.
Now we're only asking for additional one or one point two versus the three, even though we are getting, the, but the, the no mills baked in, is my point.
It is, but we're still asking for all of that at once.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but.
I just want to make sure I understood everything. I just want to make sure I understood everything.
I think the one thing is if we go for more, we're going for more, just like we did before.
It takes away the zero mill.
Yeah, then it, then this discussion is just going for more. It's not utilizing the marketing ability of a zero mill.
Unless we tried in May and then tried in August, right? Because August still qualifies under the.
It would. I worry if we're going to come back for a fourth attempt again. I mean, voters either might not come out and vote, or they're going to be like, seriously? How many times do I have to tell you my answer?
Yeah. It also really reflects poorly upon our community. I mean, how many conversations have you guys had with people that aren't even in this community? That are like, what's with you not getting a band, bond?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it, it looks then like our community doesn't support our schools. And as a school with a high school of choice, that does not look great.
I just really think we're going to really regret it if we don't. I mean, we're going to put ourselves in a really tough position because we're chasing our tail. Like what do you do? Like you'll say you went out for two mil. What are you going to do with it?
I don't want to go out for two mil. I want to go out for no mil.
No, 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 no. In two years from now.
Yeah.
In two years from now, you pass two mils. What do you do with it?
I, that's not my recommendation. I, I think that we need to go for a no mil now, make some visible changes in security, show people that we are here to make good improvements.
Being fiscally responsible.
And then go for, I, I think a new K three again, is what I think needs to happen.
And then do what?
Go for a new K three, whatever mill it takes to consolidate campuses, close our two schools that continue to take money over and over again to maintain. Um, I just, I don't.
So you're saying, don't build the pods then? You're saying no pods?
I don't believe that's the right choice right now. I believe that a new K three, a couple of years down the road is where we need to be. There's no guarantee, right? Like I can say that, I can say that's what I'd love to see. But there's no guarantee that two or three or four or five years down the road, we get that passed. I just feel like we've been told no twice. I think starting with something that is a, a smaller amount that reaches each of the schools. And I think of most of them in a visible way. Yes, there's a lot of invisible stuff, boilers and such, but security, closed entrances. I know there's pushback. I think one of the biggest things we need to focus in on is making it very clear that air conditioning and security are tied hand in hand, that we cannot secure buildings with giant open windows that it, that those two have to be interlinked for that to be supported. And, and we may not agree on this, right? Like that's why there's a board of all of us. I, I want all those things. I just feel like we have such dire needs that I'm afraid that if we don't pass, we're going to be in very bad shape.
Well, the other thing to also realize is the dire needs don't stop. We fix these today. There's still going to be other dire needs that are coming along here. And we're not going to have the money to fix them.
I mean, then we get into the, the sinking fund, which we've talked about. And I think a big part of addressing that is, is being rid of two very outdated buildings. Um, you know, the, a lot of our ongoing needs are from buildings that are just old. And yes, I, I agree. It's hard. I mean, I think the answer that we all want is one that's not on the table, right? Like if, if we had everything we wanted, we would have a very, very different plan. But I think we're to the point where we kind of have to decide. Do we go? Do we try and risk? Or do we take what is much more likely and use it and build goodwill? And I lean towards that camp.
We still have the August election if it were to fail. And I know everybody's like voter fatigue, but aren't there voter on both sides? So wouldn't more people be like, yeah, we at least have to get this done. And the no voters would probably be like, I give up.
I wish that was it.
We fatigued them.
Oh, man, that's awesome.
Just like I fatigued all of you.
I feel fatigued right now. I don't know. I, I think I just struggle with throwing good money after bad. That's, that's my biggest heartache in this whole thing is that I feel like we, we just, to your point, it's, there's going to be more needs in those buildings and we throw a bunch of money at it right now. And then we're just in a couple of years have to turn around and throw more money at it just to keep them. And it really doesn't solve the problem. It's a Band-Aid, right? And let's call it what it is. It's a Band-Aid. So.
I guess I feel like both of these plans are Band-Aids. So I'd rather have a more guaranteed Band-Aid than less guaranteed Band-Aid. Because while I agree pods do resolve some of the issues, I think that we're still just putting a Band-Aid, the biggest Band-Aid on the worst problem. And I don't know that that's the right choice.
I don't know if I totally agree because I think more than a Band-Aid, it's actually progress. You know, the community asked us to get to one community, one, one campus. That's what they, they said in that. You know, that was the number one thing that came through in that.
I just meant we're putting a Band-Aid on, on the primary school.
Yeah. Oh yeah. The primary, there's zero, zero way around that. You know, I mean, there's just no way around.
I do remember too, though, they did say if we did invest the money, which I hate because it's just sunk cost, but that it did bring up that percentage pretty far that I was like, okay, well, at least then it's manageable, but.
I think for Eagle Lake.
For Eagle Lake, not for primary. Gotcha. I didn't hear their number for primary.
I mean, I would love to see exactly what it would take for us to get to one campus. I don't know if they can throw those numbers up for us, how quickly they can do it. But to get to one campus and see, you know, what kind of, what kind of mill does it really take in order to fix the things we need? Unless I'm the only person that believes that's, I'm one of seven, but.
And I think that if we're looking hard at those numbers, which I'm, I'm, I think that's a good idea to at least see what that looks like. Then part of that, I think I raised a question last meeting that there were concerns that things like the gym and the cafeteria were not equipped to add on to pods in their current condition. So then I think we need to look at the, the cost of.
Yeah, to be a true.
A true, right. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You know, I feel like the numbers that they quoted us were just for like, here are the pods, but revisiting, what does that mean?
It needs to be for a four grade facility.
Yeah.
I felt like in the last round, we, that they were adding a gym and a lunchroom with the pods. When, when we, we talked about it.
But I don't know that we ever got numbers because we basically had shifted. Like that was on that very first thing. And then that kind of got brought up as like, well, wait, these other facilities aren't it? And then we kind of just went like, no, let's go for the K twelve or K three, sorry. And I don't, I, not that I can recall, we never circled back to get those numbers because everybody was kind of in agreement like, let's do this instead. And I don't, I don't think that.
I'll reach out and get clarification on what they included before and then what they would include now.
And then once we have that, then I think we look at, okay, what is the total quantity? And what is, what does that either look like for a millage to do everything we've already asked about plus that? Or if we want to stick at one, what do we cut from that list? And I, I will again voice the higher that plus gets, the more concerned I am.
Well, that I think the one word that I'll say here is the ambiguity. Thank you. And I couldn't even say it. See, you have me so, no. Anyway, that, the thing that was, the thing that, sorry, I'm tired. Anyway, um, the thing that was very unclear, I think, to the voters. And then now I think to us is we really need a specific list of whatever it is that we decide to do. We need it nailed down that these are the specific asks and really what we can accomplish. So we can go check, 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 whether we go out in two years from now, or we go back in August, or whatever it is that we do, I think that to show that we've made some progress and be very specific. Because I think it was kind of all over the board with the feedback I received. But I think for us to make a decision, both on what we go for now, a very specific list is really kind of what we need. That if we only go for zero, we can do X, Y, and Z.
And they showed us that when they were here last time. If it was a zero mill, they laid that out for us, what they would do.
The money.
Like some options, not necessarily as specific. But if it's a list of just the itemized things, I can have them go back and, and recalculate what that would be.
Ambiguity. Thank you, Tony.
But in my kind of hearing that regardless of what we're going for, that we want to look to move the operational mileage to February. Because that also we have to let the.
I mean, we can move it back to May in the future. This would just be some kind of a one-time thing to free up.
Unless, but I mean, February typically then, in May, we're paying for the special election.
Okay, nope.
So it would technically save money to have in February.
I think, I like it.
Are there just, are there elections every February? Or is it, would it be like a four-year thing for the primary? Like you would run it, you'd approve for four years, then you run it again in the, in the fourth year.
I think there's elections every year in EK.
Not every year. May and August are as needed, I believe.
As needed, because it seems like every year we have one.
Yeah.
We have the operation.
Well, every, yeah, every, yeah.
Oh, you're right. We do. We make us. There have been several times when it's been the only thing on there.
Yeah.
Because I think it's, it's a special election.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that is money out of our pocket, right? We, we have to pay the township to do that.
So if it's every four years, we wouldn't have to pay extra.
We could saddle up on the.
Saddle up, yep.
On the presidential primary.
Makes sense.
And it sounds like we're in agreement that something needs to happen in May. The question is just what?
And that gives us a little time to figure out what that is too, but buys us another.
Get some of these answers.
If we're going non-qualified, um, then yeah, it would give us more time before you actually have to vote to put something like at a board meeting, like for example, for February, if you, if we had moved forward with putting a bond proposal on the ballot in February, we would have needed to vote, um, in November, or of the, if we'd held a special meeting at the very beginning of December to make sure that we would meet that timeline. Now, if you're going state qualified, then it backs it up a little bit of time to go state qualified.
So can we vote at the, at?
So you'd wait to vote?
What month is it?
Two weeks, two weeks. So you would wait to?
Just, just to, for the, the operational.
Well, because we'll have to look at what the timelines are.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't necessarily think it would be in October, we would do that. I mean, we can let, we could notify the township that that's what we're looking for.
It just would be nice not to have a special.
That's all. No, I'd make sure that we could have the vote for you guys at a board meeting. I just don't know that it needs to be that October.
Okay.
But I will find out because that is new to me.
So we want more specifics on what as a zero mill would get us? And how many, what, what would it cost us to get to one campus with the pods? And to do the necessities, the necessities that we need to do with the other? How, how big of an increase is that?
Yes. And I think you mentioned the, the.
Traffic flow.
Traffic flow. I was going to say transportation.
We're both having.
Cause I think that probably needs to be part of that cost as well.
I think that was part of.
That was part of.
I think it was the.
Of the, um, the couple of pods that did have a different traffic flow. We'll confirm with that, but that was on the plans that I saw.
I knew there was some allotment in there for traffic flow. I just wasn't sure.
That traffic flow.
It was.
Parking lot and playground, I believe. But I don't know. I'll make sure those were itemized on there and not just kind of a what could be drawing.
Well, that was fun.
Next.
I still love, you know, voter fatigue both ways. It's just awesome.
Fine, I'll vote yes.
Is there anything else we need to discuss? There are a motion to adjourn then. Support. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of adjourning? Please say aye.
Aye.
Chelsea.
Chelsea and Kevin.
I'll send notes.
Oh, sure.
From our meeting today out and then we'll, I'll cover it.
Do you sign these?
Yeah.